Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the November 3rd Board of Supervisor regular meeting. We did not have a closed meeting. At this time, we normally go into public comment. And if the board is of a mind, we will continue to do that. We can speak for, let's try to keep it three minutes or less. And anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized and come up and give us your name and your district.
Madam Chairman, just a matter of housekeeping, I just wanted to call out to folks that may want to comment on it, that we move everything from the afternoon session, from the subdivision process notification policy on to the event, to the evening agenda. So it will include that subdivision process notification policy and Chester Gap mailbox damage.
And that's coming after Q1, I believe?
Correct.
Yep. All right. Public comment? Anyone wishing to speak?
Hi, guys. Kerry Sutton, Piedmont District. I'm here to talk about the First Energy tower rebuild. I think some of you have seen some of my comments, and I did send a note to Christine and Mr. Curry. I want to express some concern about the tower rebuild. I am not only an affected party because it runs on my property, but I am deeply concerned about the impact it will have on our view shed. And my request tonight is actually a fairly simple request. I think it is useful to ask First Energy to sit down in the community in Rappahannock to talk to us, to share their plans with us, and to allow us to share our concerns with them. We've asked them to do that. If you read the Rappahannock News article a couple of months ago, a month ago, they said they don't plan on doing it. I think it'd be useful if you joined me tonight in asking them to host a meeting in Rappahannock County where they can talk to our friends and our neighbors and your voters and actually have a discussion. I have lots of questions that have yet to be answered because I can't actually get to them to ask. Things like, what is the final design of these metal towers? What is the color they're going to be when they put them up? How wide or how, what's the circumference of them? The current wooden poles are four and a half feet around. Are these things bigger or are they less? I'm concerned about the width of the arms and how many wires are going to be on those arms? Is it going to create more of a visual impact than we currently have? The biggest concern is, once we make, once they, once they're able to build the towers the way they want it, it will impact us forever. It will never change, and we will have to look at whatever implications are for the rest of our time. I'm also curious about the height of every tower. I think that's a big concern for everyone right now. I don't know if you have it, but I would be curious in what the actual height of every tower in Rappahannock is right now, and what is the proposed height for those towers? They said in Rappahannock News, some of them could potentially almost double in height, which means we would see them when we look up at the, up the park. Now that RSC has decided to not be on the towers, what is the impact of that? Does that change the height and the, and the style of these towers? I'm curious if they've actually even done a study on what would happen if they use fewer, or more but shorter towers to reduce the impact in Rappahannock County? And if they haven't done a study like that, why haven't they done the study? And finally, I, you know, I'm a 30-year government employee, and I tend to know how to get around a government website. I don't know what the process is to express my concern to regulators are. They've been very vague about the timeline they have, but I don't know how I would actually express concern. I would hope that the Board of Supervisors would express some concern, make sure that they know as our highest government body that this is something that we should be paying close attention to. So tonight, let me ask you to help, to ask to, to hold a community meeting in Rappahannock County in this tower. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Is that good, Gary? All right. I have Gary's approval. I'm Patty McGill-Petersen, and I am in Piedmont District. I'd also like to express my concerns about the transmission lines. And they may be a bit preemptive, but I think better be preemptive than to be too late. We've heard that the transmission line improvement and enlargement, widening the right-of-way, et cetera, needs to be done for reliability to meet energy demand. Everyone in this room, I'm sure, is concerned about wildfires, and this line comes through the park. So there is, I think, no disagreement that we want to make sure that we don't have an unreliable system that would cause a wildfire. It's interesting that in my time here, I can't remember an incident where we were without electricity or we had downed wires from First Energy's lines. Rappahannock Electric is another story. And most of the incidents that we experience for outages come from local, on the farm lane, near your house, et cetera. So it would be very interesting to know how many incidents we have of unreliability, downed poles, downed wires, as a start to answer some of our questions. Secondly, the issue of demand. Is this for local demand? We haven't had any new industries enter the county. We basically have pretty much the same base in terms of energy demand, as I understand it. If it is going up, how much is it going up? Or are we just an extension cord? And that's the concern I have. We know that the mountains, the park, is in the way of what are now being refired coal plants in West Virginia. That is in response to what is happening with data centers. So if the point of least resistance is an already existing right-of-way, what does that mean? Are we in stage one, where the voltage remains the same, and I have been told by First Energy's engineer that it would remain the same, but for how long? And so I think there are a lot of questions. I also know that a study was done by First Energy on the impact on our natural and cultural resources. I know because the consultants were in, on my hilltop, and we were requested by First Energy to allow them to be there so that they could look at the impact on natural and cultural resources. I assume that also means view shed. And from my place, going out, it would be one view; from another, would be 211 coming in. So there are a lot of questions, and I would ask that we have a public hearing so we can get some of those questions answered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Jeff Wallbaum, also Piedmont, same set of issues. Just want to echo what's been said and highlight, I think you mentioned it, but Kerry hadn't, the rights-of-way is another concern. And I understand that what I've seen publicly, that they desire a wider right-of-way. I know in my personal instance, our right-of-way is narrower already than what First Energy understands it to be, and they've violated that right-of-way. We see other places where they have rights-of-way that are hard to access, and they don't do maintenance that they've done on our easily accessible property, where it's easier to get to think they want to cut down such. And so, and we've heard no direct contact from them. I mean, I assume that there has to be some kind of legal negotiation on, you know, that's a valuable asset, this rights-of-way, and we've heard nothing from First Energy about that. So, and second, everything said before about the desire for more information from them. Thanks.
Thank you.
Karen Hunt, Jackson District. I'll just say, as an aside, I agree with the First Energy. Actually, I had a conversation with my supervisor this morning about it. But I'm here to talk about MK Ishii. She was an incredible human being. She was brilliant. She was one of the smartest and most intuitive people I have ever met. In addition to her intelligence, she was also wise. And people sometimes confuse those two traits, but they are distinctly different. She was honest and ethical and humble and kind. She was generous with her time, her talent, and her knowledge. An ardent and devoted citizen only scratches the surface of her contributions here. She cared deeply, deeply, about Rappahannock County. She cared about people. She cared about animals. She recognized and valued the unique, unique character and beauty that we have here. She worked so hard and gave so much of herself to Rappahannock. A billion years of view shed is worth preserving, and that should be our mantra out here. We are all richer for having her among us for the time she was here. Anita Ramos commented at a previous meeting that the next revision of the comp plan include her name in dedication for her contributions, and I echo that sentiment. I am so grateful to MK for all that she taught me. She was a friend and a mentor to me. She supported me, and she was so incredibly kind, even when others were not. And I can think of no better way to honor her legacy than by continuing to work to protect the unique and rural scenic beauty that we have here in Rappahannock. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll also follow that pattern in agreeing and endorsing a public meeting with First Energy and giving everyone a chance who, whose lives are already pretty full and can't come to these meetings as much as they'd like, or read as much as they'd like, to be able to catch up. And there's something that happens in an experience in a room where everyone hears the same thing at the same time that I think would be valuable in the county. But I also want to say just, off of one little anecdote about MK Ishii. And that's that when she first realized that she was ill and was going to be going through treatments, she called me up and said, basically gave me a number of things that she wanted to see carried forward in the work that she was interested in doing in the county. And some of them were quite big picture, very creative, very innovative. Had little opportunity to share those and address those in terms of any official proceedings yet, but I have a file that I wrote the village people on because she wanted to make sure that people in the village of Sperryville, at very least, were up to date on those thoughts that she had had. And then she went and did her best from there. So I just have the deepest respect. She was a dear friend of mine, and we didn't see each other very often at all, but I always knew she was there. I hope that she still is. Thank you.
Would you introduce yourself just for the?
Sure. Monica Worth, Piedmont District.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anita Ramos, Hampton District. I've been a reader of obits for probably almost my whole life, since I opened up a newspaper. And very few obits stick with me as far as inside, and MK's was. She was an extraordinary person, even more extraordinary than I realized before. And Ms. Karen has already stolen a little my funder. I do hope that we can dedicate the comprehensive plan to her. She has, she did so much for us for so long and gave so much of her life for Rappahannock County. I'll never forget her.
Thank you.
Rick Kohler, Jackson District. I'd like to second Mr. Sutton's emotion about what he had to say about some more conversations about what's going on. But I'd also like to speak about MK. And MK, MK's passing caught me by surprise, and I wrote this for her. It's Mary Catherine. Go forth, my friend, never one to retreat. Steadfast you have been through these mortal days. A defender for those without voice, protector of Eden, helper to those in need, and friend to Rappahannock. May your newfound wings raise you to the glorious heights. Verdant gardens atop rocky clouds where fantastic waterfalls flow. The song of the bird catches the breeze, and nature is in harmony. Where those ahead found peace and those to follow see the light. A faithful guardian of the planet, you labored against odds, bore the brunt of naysayers, pressed for the oppressed, and made progress for those who worked toward the good. Your strength and kindness will long remain in our hearts with our love and thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Diane Bruce, Piedmont. To follow up on what Patty said about the lines coming from Page County over here, I think it is a prelude to where they're going to continue going because when the power lines came through here around 1930, it came over the mountain. It went up 211, all the houses and the schools and everything got built after we got power here, and they go to Front Royal. So I suspect that what we're seeing is the beginning of what will be continued in a big, powerful way, and I worry about it also. As to MK, she was also a friend of mine. She was an amazing woman, so bright. Her family bought property here around, I don't know, the 19, early 1960s. She was practically raised here, although they lived in Herndon. They came here frequently. She loved it. So she was one of us for sure, and she cared, and we cared for her. So thank you for considering this resolution.
Thanks, Karen. All right. Not seeing any other hands in the courtroom. We have a couple of people on Zoom. Anyone wishing to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. All right. Not seeing any Zoom hands, all closed public comment. And now it is my honor to present the resolution of appreciation for Mary Catherine Ishii. Her brother Jim and sisters are here, but Jim's going to come up and join. Resolution of appreciation for former Rappahannock County Planning Commission member and passionate advocate for Rappahannock County, Mary Catherine Ishii. Whereas Mary Catherine MK Ishii, a resident of Sperryville who died on July 13th, 2025, was an ardent and devoted citizen who served Rappahannock County in many ways. And whereas she benefited the citizens of Rappahannock County as a member of the Rappahannock County Planning Commission, contributing endless hours using her legal training, her exceptional research skills, her knowledge of zoning, and her personal experience to address issues related to growth and development within Rappahannock County with an eye towards preserving the natural beauty and character of the county. And whereas as an early executive director of Rapid Home, she was instrumental in establishing its operating model and committed to addressing the needs and concerns of every individual member. And whereas she served the felines of the county as a devoted volunteer at RapCast, a local nonprofit that rescues, cares for, and facilitates adoptions of cats. And whereas she was an active member of Keep Rappahannock Rural, a citizen group formed to encourage the preservation of scenic backroads because, in quotes, because a billion years of view shed is worth preserving, end quotes. And whereas she was an active member of Rappahannock League for Environmental Protection, an organization dedicated to preserving the natural resources and rural character of Rappahannock County. And whereas she modeled kindness, strength of character, and a sense of humor to benefit, to the benefit of all in her community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors acknowledges its sincerest gratitude for Mary Catherine MK Ishii's service to Rappahannock County and its residents in all the above capabilities, or capacities, sorry. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the service and accomplishments of this dedicated Rappahannock County servant, adopted this third day of November 2025. Okay. We're going to take a brief recess, just a couple of minutes, and that'll give people time to transition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a present, present resolution, oh, sorry, First Energy Presentation, Sperryville to Luray Transmission Line Update.
Good evening. It's good to be back. It was a beautiful drive to get here today. Thanks for the opportunity.
You're sounding positive after all the comments.
I am, I absolutely am. So Dan Tompkins, Director of Project Engagement and Outreach for First Energy, here to provide you an update and briefing on the Page-Sperryville Transmission Rebuild. First, I'll start with thank you to the residents who came out to express other concerns. I'm happy to take anyone's name and contact information to connect them with the appropriate staff at First Energy to answer their specific questions. I've got good notes here. I'll try to address some of that as I talk through today. As I did last year when I came to initially brief you about this, I'll start by saying this is not a data center project. This is a 50-plus-year-old existing 138-kilovolt transmission line. Wood poles that have been taking the brunt of both weather and woodpecker and are in need of replacing. It will be 138-kilovolt transmission line when this project is completed. We cannot put higher voltage wires on these towers for two really important reasons. One, they're engineered and designed to only carry the load of 138-kilovolt transmission lines. Second, we have to get State Corporation Commission approval to do this replacement project, and would have to get separate State Corporation Commission approval to do any other upgrades or work on this line. So both from a physical and from a regulatory perspective, we can't bait and switch, right?
Can I, I don't want to interject.
Yeah, sure.
But I also, I've spoken to several people that live and have worked with you all before, I guess many years before, when this was installed, and they actually have it as a condition of their agreement with you all that the load won't increase. Is that, is that correct? Am I correct in understanding that?
Some easements may have language like that in them. I mean, one of the, one of the processes going on as our real estate personnel have contacted residents impacted by the line is to update those easements, right? In some cases, the easements allow for wood poles, not metals, right? So you have to update the easements to accommodate the new engineering standards that are a part of the, of the build.
Okay.
And so that's an ongoing process, an ongoing conversations with individual landowners. If there are landowners who have not been contacted by us and have infrastructure on their property, I would be surprised by that. But again, I will happily take their contact information and get the right folks at the company in touch with them to answer the questions that they have about their particular circumstance or the line in general. You all have a deck in there. I won't go slide-by-slide on that. You can review it at your leisure. I'm assuming that it's publicly available as well.
Yes.
Perfect. Great. The, the thing I would focus on first in the deck, and then I'll, I'll actually spend my time answering some of the questions that were addressed today.
Great.
Is on the schedule, just to update you on that schedule and process for sort of where we are and what's next. Since I last briefed you, we have had multiple meetings regularly scheduled with SVEC, REC, and the park to address the project and its, and its considerations. I think those dialogues have been robust. I think all of the stakeholders have perspectives that we want to make sure are addressed. We clearly want to make sure that our outage planning for this does not impact the reliability of service for distribution customers of REC or SVEC on the other side of the, of the mountain, and also with the park, and making sure that our construction plan does not impact the park. Certainly, I hope we impact the park less than the federal government shutdown is right now, right? But those conversations are ongoing. There's open dialogue between all of those partners. If there are questions about engagements between First Energy and REC, SVEC, or the park, I'm happy to track those down, any specific questions. But I think those conversations have been very beneficial so far and continue, and we're not going to be able to build the line unless we have the buy-in of the partners that we're working with, yourselves included. On the schedule, the timeline has shifted a little bit from the last time I was with you. So we expect to file for a certificate of convenience and public necessity, which is the regulatory thing that we need from the State Corporation Commission early next year. And we wanted to come back and brief you before we put that filing in, so that's why we scheduled this now, right? We're close to when that filing is going to be. Once that filing is made, the typically procedurally, the State Corporation Commission would assign it to an administrative law judge. That administrative law judge would set a procedural schedule and open a docket for the, the filing. To the question about how to make your comments known, I'm happy to provide information about where to go on the SEC website to find the place to make your comments known so that you can submit your individual comments to the State Corporation Commission on the public record for their consideration. We can't do the upgrade until we get the certificate of public convenience and necessity from the State Corporation Commission. So they'll take into account public comment, they'll take into account our conversations with the park, they'll take into account the engineering, the need, all of, all of those components, and then ultimately, you know, our hope, issue that CPCN so that we can construct the project. It typically takes between 12 and 18 months for a CPCN, so construction would not be able to begin until after that State Corporation Commission process was complete. A number of the, the in-service date has shifted out a little bit, in part because we have had robust dialogue with the park, and we've had to break our construction times out into different smaller batches, essentially, so that we're not impacting the park during their high seasons, and so that we're not doing any tree clearing during timelines that are sensitive for various animals, right? Fauna that need to be addressed. Mats are typically the creature that we need to address in terms of when we're clearing and when we're not. So that proposed timeline is in the deck for you as well. And then let me see if I can address some of the other questions. I think I hit most of the, the sort of big substantive questions.
Let me just reiterate. This presentation is attached to this agenda item in Board Docs. Anybody can download it, download it anytime you want.
And if folks have trouble, I'm happy to provide my contact information so I can send them a direct copy of it. Happy to do that, not a problem at all. So that SEC filing, in addition to the public comment, the SEC will hold a public hearing in the project area, on the project, for people to come in person and provide comment, testimony, you know, their perspectives on the project as well. So that would be something that the SEC would set up and do as a part of that process. As a reminder, we did hold an open house for the project in November of 2024 in Luray. Advertize that in local press around. But that's not to say that we're not going to have further conversations, right? Like I said, if folks have questions, we want them to be answered. We want this to be a transparent process where folks, at least whether they like the answer or not, right, have an opportunity to ask their question and have If one of those is out, you only have one source into the Sperryville substation. If both of those are out, you have no power coming into the Sperryville substation. So it's important for us to rebuild this line to make sure that it's reliable, so that those distribution customers have the source of energy they need in the county. We don't build spec lines, right? I mean, we build the lines to serve the load. So if there is not a large load, we're not going to build a large line. That, that's, that's not how we build, it's not how we are allowed to recover funds for our infrastructure. So there would have to be a large development that created a large load preceding us even considering building a large line. So if, if you have, you know, zoning in the county that precludes large loads, or if you have, you know, other sort of ordinances in the county that determine your comprehensive plan and your sort of commercial and industrial development, if you're not allowing those things to come here, we're not going to build a line to it, because it's never going to be here.
Well, that's not a hypothetical in Rappahannock County. I mean, you're talking generally about a locality that might have all those things.
Right.
You're, you're in it, you're in it, which is, which is why.
Then you've got that protection.
Yeah.
Right, and, and you want to feel comfortable, if, if you have that zoning set up, if you have those guardrails set up in terms of how you handle commercial industrial development in the county, we're not going to come propose a big line hoping that some developer will decide to build a, a factory or a data center here. That is not the model by which transmission infrastructure is built in this, in this country. We can't get it financed, right? We can't get it paid for that way. So there shouldn't be a concern there. I've had several conversations in the county recently. A lot of your neighbors are having the same kind of conversations, some coming from different perspectives, some wanting to court data center development, some, Loudoun County, for example, having a lot of data center infrastructure and trying to figure out how they can retool their guardrails to change how things happen moving forward. Frederick County, Maryland, for example, is doing a critical digital infrastructure zoning overlay map right now, and they're going through that process. So, you know, it's timely to have those kind of conversations, you know, and kudos to every county that is doing so, right, to, to be able to make sure that they are comfortable with their ordinances and how it defines, you know, sort of their planning process. But we don't build lines on a speculative basis.
So my simple question, based on what I heard folks say here tonight, and then listening to you, you had an open hearing, you said in 2024 in Luray. I'm looking at this line, it's Page County, Rappahannock County, why not have an open hearing in Rappahannock County? I mean, it's really simple, you're here, you're being very forthcoming with your information, you're telling us it's not a data center project. You know, in this day and time when everything, the buzzword is transparency, like, why not just come and do it?
Yeah, I mean, I think part, part of the determination is, is staff time allocation of resources and proximity to the project area, right? So it is not very far, this is not a long line project, right? And so, you know, I think the determination was made that it was reasonable for, for access to have one project, open house for the project, knowing that the State Corporation Commission is also going to have a public hearing as a part of their process, and also knowing that if any individual landowner has a question, or any resident of Rappahannock County has a question about the project, we're happy to answer it.
There's a lot easier way to, to solve that question, just have a second public hearing and then you don't have.
Yeah, I'll take that request back to the project team.
Then you don't have to talk around.
I'll, I'm happy to take that request back to the project team.
And I don't, we haven't really had a public hearing, and I don't know that we would. It would require, it isn't really a public hearing process. I mean, I don't think.
County public hearing.
Community, yeah. If you want to have a community listening session, that is not a public hearing. But if you, if you want to do something, I mean, the thing that I would say is schedule a place, date and time, and have an open house at the Sperryville Fire Department, and offer some office hours, couple hours of office hours, to meet with people that are, continue to express concerns that seem to be having trouble making contact for whatever reason, and then have two hours of availability onsite at the volunteer fire department, and your problem will be solved.
Yeah, like I said, I'll take that request back to the project team.
Well, I just think, you know, this is the district which I represent, and the people in Rappahannock are very fair people, but they're also people that they want to know, they're very smart, and they really want to know what's going on. We're very different from every county around us, as you can probably tell, and we are fiercely independent and proud of that. We made different choices than every county around us, purposefully so. And so I think it's entirely fair that people are asking for you to come and speak to them one-on-one and in a public session with the same materials you offered in Luray. And it would be, I mean, it's a favor, we're basically asking you.
One thing I can say is.
However, it is a favor that will pay dividends for you in the long run.
Sure. All of those materials are available on the virtual open house that is still up on the, the, the project website, right? So you can see vegetation management practices, you can see the detailed project maps, you can see all of the same information, and you can directly send a, a message to the project transmission staff to, to get a question answered.
With all due respect, I mean, there's like a collective.
I understand the ask.
And I, I'm not, I'm not finding fault with you. I've always found you to be very forthcoming.
Yeah.
That's why I'm being very forthcoming about what I think would be helpful for you.
Sure.
It's, we just don't know what we don't, you know, the right, we don't know what we don't know. So I, I think, I appreciate you taking the ask back.
Sure.
Can I ask a question about the SEC?
Yeah.
Two, two questions on the SEC front. So you said that the limiting factor here is engineering and design for the, the capacity of the transmission lines, right? So you're coming in with a project plan.
Right.
That assumes a certain height of tower, certain type of tower. The idea of not being a data center project, we understand it's, it's a 138-kilovolt transmission line. Okay, so that's your upfront design you put to the SEC. And let's say, let's say through the public hearing process and online public comment, the SEC gets a ton of negative feedback about whatever your starting point is for this upgrade to your transmission line. If it's not a rubber stamp process, and you can look me in the eye and tell me that this is not a rubber stamp process, then what do you do to revise your upfront plan based on the SEC quasi-judicial administrative law judge process? A docket is, as you said, a docket is, is put together, you go through this process as a public utility, you come in with a plan, there's public pressure to revise your plan for whatever reason, and I'm not in the details.
Yeah, plans can be revised by the SEC in, in negotiation with the parties during the, during the process, absolutely.
Okay, so my related question, a corollary, I guess, to that question is, how much wiggle room, other than coming and telling us what you're planning to do, and telling us that you're going to be transferred and go through this SEC process, how much wiggle room do you all have to revise your plan? Or are we just stuck with it, and is the SEC just going to, after hearing from the public?
Yeah.
And taking all that input into account, simply going to rubber stamp what you came in with on the front end of the process?
So it's a good question. I mean, I think on this, on this project, right, there are different types of transmission upgrade projects. As I mentioned when I came last time, this is, this is condition-based, right? This is an update to an existing line, not an upgrade, not a new line, right? So to the extent that there's wiggle room, it's pole location on individual properties, not the broad path of the transmission line itself, because this is a like-for-like, it's almost one-to-one pole in terms of the replacement, and, and the height changes are as much due to updated electrical safety standards as they are anything else. So in terms of State Corporation Commission wiggle room on this, I don't know how much there is because of the type of project it is, right? I mean, it is a point-to-point, like-for-like replacement of aged infrastructure.
I was talking more about, from an engineering and design perspective, if there's negative, if there's, if there's adverse input from the public.
Yeah.
In our county, I don't care about Page in this context, I love the people of Page County, but we're talking Rappahannock County. So for these people.
Yeah.
Up toward the park and through Sperryville to that substation, if, if the SEC gathers all these public comments, everyone's like, no, I mean, that design's absurd and it seems overwrought, et cetera, et cetera. I'm asking, what wiggle room do you have from an engineering and design perspective for these upgraded towers to adjust in response to that input? Because absent wiggle room, then I would argue that the entire SEC process is simply a rubber stamp exercise.
So I don't think it's rubber stamp, right? I mean, I think that there are general standards in terms of transmission infrastructure build that occur. I, I would say, we can only build what the SEC approves us to do, right? And so that public input and comment, if it does, you know, make the SEC say you can do something different than what we did, and that's the order that they give us, then that's a part of the negotiation of the final order and whether or not, you know, it's accepted or not. In, in extreme cases, you could have denial of a, of a certificate of public convenience and necessity and, and the need to refile. I don't think that's where this project is or goes. I think that most of the, of the conversations that I've had as a part of the project are wanting to understand more about the why and about the, the sort of choices that we have made and how we have done the engineering and design, and that's completely reasonable. And, and so I don't, I mean, I think this is a relatively straightforward project from a regulatory perspective. I wouldn't call it rubber stamp, but I wouldn't call it a complicated filing, right? But for, right, and we're aware of this, it goes through the park, and that matters a lot, right? And, and that's incredibly important. So it, it's not, you know, it's not flatland, no trees, no parks, existing line.
We love the park, but we also love our taxpaying citizens.
Individual viewshed.
Who spend a premium on property.
Absolutely.
Based on open space and all of the great land use work that our predecessors have done to make this county unique anywhere in the mid-Atlantic region.
A billion years of viewshed.
So you can extend, you extend your care and, and attention on the park to Rappahannock County.
Absolutely, of course.
Because it's no different.
Yeah.
Well, that does beg the question, in their negotiations with you, we have received feedback from the park on tower structures in the county before. Did you, did the park engage you on the viewshed issue?
Yeah, we had, we had direct conversations with park leadership about viewshed impact. We told them what our intention was in terms of engineering and the, the monopoles with the weatherized steel. They did not have significant concerns about that engineering choice and that, and that design choice. And, and one other thing about the shift from the H-frames to the, the monopoles is, while they will be taller in some cases, right, on, on the line, the monopole has less viewshed impact than the H-frame because the H-frame is wider, right? So there is, there's, there's a taller, yes, viewshed impact, there's a mitigation for, for the monopole versus the H-frame, and there's a mitigation on the weatherized steel as well.
Because of that brownish.
It's the brownish, yeah, it's the brownish.
But it looks like the, the arms coming off are still silver and bright. Will it all be weatherized?
You've got the government affairs guy, not the engineer guy, so let me write that down and get a specific answer.
It would be nice if everything was in a, we, we learned the hard way, that it's nice when everything blends.
Sure.
And will these poles be high enough that they require a light at the top for airplanes? No?
No. 200, 200 feet is the FAA threshold for, for lighting, so we're nowhere near that on any of this.
Okay. If I remember correctly, Sperryville has lost power, was it from the?
I, I'm confident that that line's gone down, although not very often, and it's pretty reliable.
Uh, yes, I, I did take a note to get the reliability statistics for the line, so I'll, I'll provide that to you guys. There have been emergency replacements of poles on that line over the intervening 50 years from, from when it was built, so I know that there has been at least some fault in the line, right, and some, some pole failures that we've had to address on an emergency basis.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions, I'll just slowly walk through them. I appreciate you coming back. When you first came, we asked you some hard questions, so you can see the passion in the room. And I know you have this in your materials, but can you remind me, how many miles is the upgrade?
I'm going to go to the book myself. My recollection is 11. Let me go to the project website, which I conveniently have pulled up.
I think that that kind of rings a bell for me. I thought it was somewhere in between 10 and 13.
11 or 13 is the.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
13.8 miles.
13.8 miles. And how much of that do you think is in our county? Would you say half?
Rough numbers, it's, it's half-half, but I, I can check and find out. I can get you an exact number of how, how many miles are in each county.
Okay.
That's, that's easily available.
Looks like a little less than half.
Yeah.
I, I do think it would be a powerful gesture to come talk to us and to do something like you did in Luray here. So I know you've got that request, so I just wanted to say that again. How much do you think this is going to cost?
We just did an updated cost estimate that we ran through our transmission leadership as they put together their financing plan for the next year. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I can get it for you. The costs increased from the last time we were here and gave an estimate because the length of construction time increased to accommodate the park, and because some of the other engineering challenges, given the topography, made it a little bit more expensive. But I can get that for you.
Okay. I'm assuming that you guys don't spend money when you don't have to.
Correct.
And.
Because, and can I, can I do a follow-up on that?
Absolutely.
So, so utility, the, the way a utility makes money is invest in its infrastructure, and then it asks its regulators to approve those expenses and, and give it a rate of return on, on that, on that capital. And those expenses have to be prudently incurred. So that's the test, right? The regulators look to make sure that the dollars we spend are prudently incurred, and if they're not, a utility can have expenses disallowed by their regulatory body. So when, when utilities go in for rate cases, they ask for X amount of money based on XY amount of investment that they've done over a period of time. And the State Corporation Commission, in, in this case, it would be the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, because it's transmission, would look at the expenditures Potomac Edison made in its transmission infrastructure and determine whether or not they were prudent, and only those prudently incurred costs would be eligible for us to recover and renew.
Right, and can you just sort of remind everybody in the room who that cost is recovered from?
So that cost is recovered from all of the ratepayers within, because this project is only within one zone of PJM, which is the regional grid operator, the cost for this project would be spread among the ratepayers of that zone. So not just the two counties, but the, the broader region.
Okay. And I want to ask you about easements. And you said you've been reaching out to folks with easements. And I've heard through the grapevine, and I don't know this because I have not confirmed it, but perhaps that some people have given easements that have restrictions on them, like you can't change the wooden poles, or something like, to this effect. And I want to ask you what you guys are going to do when those easements say you cannot use wooden, or you cannot use anything but wooden poles, what are you guys going to do?
Yeah, I mean, the hope would be to get all of the poles changed to the steel pole, but the overarching need is to update the line so that it is more reliable and not 50 to 60-year-old woodpecker-infested poles. So could there be a circumstance where not every pole is the weatherized steel? I suppose so, but that also increases the cost because you're doing two different designs, right? And, and it could increase the, the construction time as well, you know, it, it, our preference would be for the design to be the design across the entire line, because that is a more efficient way to build the project.
So I'm hearing that what you're going to do is you're going to work with the landowners to try and.
Yes.
Come up with something, and what I'm hearing is.
And the vast majority of those conversations have been.
You're going to try and keep it as cheap as possible.
Yeah, and, and the vast majority of those conversations have been, to my understanding, when I've checked in with the real estate team, constructive conversations.
Okay, so, and they'll be ongoing, I'm assuming.
For sure.
Do you all plan to condemn any more land?
Uh, I don't believe so. I mean, I, I don't, I mean, if, if there's additional right-of-way that's needed, we would negotiate with landowners for that, right? It is never our intention to start from a position of condemnation, that's a, a, you know, a regulatory.
Process.
Process of, of last resort, right? We want to work with landowners so that there's a mutually beneficial agreement between each landlord and the company.
Okay, so just upfront, you're, you're, you are not envisioning that is a last resort?
I've never heard anyone on this project talk about the word condemnation in any project meeting I've been a part of.
So can I ask you how you all are going to do this? You have a current line going up.
I mean, I, I don't, I mean, if, if there's additional right of way that's needed, we would negotiate with landowners for that, right? It is never our intention, uh, to start from a position of condemnation. That's a, 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 you know, a regulatory.
Process.
Process of, of last resort, right? We want to work with landowners so that there's a mutually beneficial agreement between each landlord and the company.
Okay, so just upfront, you're, you're, you are not envisioning that as a last resort?
I've never heard anyone in this project talk about the word condemnation in any project meeting I've been a part of.
So can I ask you how you all are gonna do this? You have a current line going up.
Correct.
You gotta put up another one. You have a certain amount of easement there. How are you gonna do it?
I'm not the construction expert.
What's your guess? You see what I'm saying though? You've got a tight wire and you gotta put one, yeah, how do you get the lights on?
So, so you actually, you actually sequence the construction so that you're taking one down and putting one up?
Yeah.
Right? And, 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 and one of the things that we're doing is coordinating very closely with R E C and, and Shen Valley so that those windows of outages, um, are accommodative to, to their needs so that their infrastructure remains energized. There may be some outages that need to occur, um, for the, for the construction to take place. But it's also possible that we could build the tower, string the line, de-energize the other, sorry, de-energize the other. Uh, so, so we're minimizing the outages. And there's an entire group at the company that's literally outage management and, and, and construction, and those two groups put together the plan for each line to make sure that we're minimizing the, the outages, um, and accommodating the, the load serving customers that, that we're serving.
So we just had a, um, and I should, I just want to tell you this, that we just had a presentation from the CFO from R E C who gave us a shocking number. Eleven hundred megawatts is what they're delivering to the areas. You're probably well aware in the ass.
I saw the president give a, a, a presentation at a Virginia chamber event last week.
And I believe, uh, R E C has, well, I, was it the CEO?
Um, no, it was the chairman of the board.
Chairman of the board said that people in the area can be expecting brownouts and blackouts. You know, when you have eleven hundred megawatts being delivered in the service area right now, and there is an ask of twenty thousand. And there have been coal-fired power plants which have been taken offline. Uh, there are renewable energy projects that have been stopped. I, I'm just thinking about the ratepayer and I'm, 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 I, I'm having a very, and this has nothing to do with you. I'm just, you're on the heels of this presentation. That he, that he gave us last month. I, 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 I think it's hard to believe that the average ratepayers isn't gonna be paying double in five years or if not more. And, and, and because who's gonna stop? Uh, look, without getting into that conversation, what I'm focused on in this area is a, is a thirteen mile thing coming into our county at to a subs, to a substation. And I asked you this question before, which was, how can I tell constituents and people in Rappahannock? It's not just coming here to give everybody their power. Uh, I'm sorry, that it is just coming here to give everybody their power, that it's not going to continue through.
Because we'd have to do public open houses and file at the state corporation commission to get regulatory approval to do that.
Just like this.
Have to post public notice for that.
Exactly.
We can't just build transmission lines.
Right, but that is this process as well.
Right, so you just.
Well, just I just want to finish is that this is this process as well. You have to go to the S C C.
Right.
It's a process.
Yes.
Mr. Whitson kind of brought up the point before, which is that you're gonna go before N A L J and then you're gonna have a hearing and you're gonna do all that stuff. If there's a need in the area.
You live in a region.
So my, my.
If people around you do things that require transmission infrastructure upgrades.
Right.
Then there is the possibility that someone, maybe us, maybe another transmission, uh, operator, right? I mean, transmission can be built by non-incumbent utilities as well. We're the incumbent transmission utility here. Um, but there are projects going on in the broader region right now in western Maryland and north central west Virginia and, and, you know, the Shenado, northern Shenado Valley, um, that are being built by transmission operators that are not the incumbent utility in that, in that area. Uh, so, I mean, the, because you live near large load growth. I, I, I suppose that is a possibility that there could be a need for transmission infrastructure.
I mean, it is the one place in the world where all the data centers are. I mean, that's fast.
That's actually changing.
It is changing and hopefully, hopefully it changes fast.
I just drove, I just drove north of Columbus yesterday. And there are seven sixty-five KV lines that have sprouted up in the last ten years there to power the Intel campus north of Columbus and also a series of data centers there. Um, a lot of the old coal-fired power plants in Pennsylvania are, um, developers are looking at them as targets for repurposing of natural gas firepower plants and co-locating data center. So it is, the, the geography of the data center world is broadening. Now, the challenge for that from a transmission perspective, if, if Rappahannock County is looking at it is, all of that's within PJM, right? The, the, the regional grid operator. So when PJM looks at
Yeah.
Where is its load? Where is its generation? Do the transmission lines connect those two things the way they need to? Um, you know, Loudoun County, Frederick County have seen a lot of transmission, like, spend a lot of time there on projects that we've proposed and are gonna be constructing.
So these, these, uh, monopoles, you're saying are only, they're a hundred and thirty-eight kilovolts, what's the max allowed on those?
We're designing those poles to carry a hundred and thirty-eight KV lines.
Right.
So they can't carry any other KV.
Right. So is, am I correct in thinking, and this is why I was asking the question, is, is that, yes, you guys can do the same process before the S C C. And by the way, I just want to say, this is the kind of process that informs the S C C. This is the kind of noise, the political noise, the people discussing. This is the check and balance of how these things work.
Absolutely.
So, yes, you can do this, but it is possible also that if a bigger power line were to come through, you'd just have to do this whole thing again.
Right, correct.
And you'd scrap that and you'd put in bigger ones?
No, I don't know if that's accurate or not, right?
Okay.
We're gonna build the line to, to, to serve the load if this line is, for example, um.
Wait, so you could, you could put more than a hundred and thirty-eight on this?
No.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
No.
They need poles.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need bigger poles.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, for sure. Absolutely. We need bigger poles to have bigger, uh, to have bigger voltages on.
That's what I was saying.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
We have a project in, uh, Frederick, uh, Clark, Jefferson, West Virginia, Loudoun, um, that's a wreck and rebuild. It's an existing one thirty-eight that we're going to do a five hundred and one thirty-eight. And we're doing monopoles and we're doing it in the same right of way. So we're not taking additional right of way to do it because we're doing a vertical configuration instead of a horizontal. Now, what that means is taller, but not wider. And that was the expressed position of the communities through which that line was going. It was their strong preference that we do everything possible to minimize the additional right of way needed, and we were able to do that.
To, to Van's excellent, to Van's excellent point in terms of communicating as clearly and unequivocally as possible to our constituents about your intentions. And recognizing that, to some extent, the S C C A L J process is a hurdle for you all, but obviously you're good at leaping over these hurdles.
I think we have a good need case for this line.
Yeah. So, um, and I, I hate to tee this up for you because I feel like you're gonna knock it out of the park when I pose this question, but I still want to pose it because I'm just wondering in my own mind. You mentioned incumbency versus non-incumbent, um, of vendors or, or, or power companies. Um, is it reasonable for us to communicate to our constituents that, given the design limitations of the towers that are within this S C C proposal?
This process, yeah.
And this process in this particular segment of, of ongoing S C C review of your infrastructure. That your incumbency in our locality is a benefit to the extent that you have gone through this process and locked yourself into what Van articulated well, infrastructure that is intended to serve our community and not to run through our community to a data center, and that goes back to your opening.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And now, I, I, I mean, I get it, um, that you could come back and revise the whole thing. But for some period of time, given your investment in this upgrade, hopefully, we can rest assured you're gonna be a good partner and you're not gonna pull a bait and switch on us.
That's absolutely my intention for sure. Um, and, and here's what I'd say. It, um, and I, I think I walked through this a little bit last year when I came, but do it again because it, it directly answers your question. There are two basic kinds of transmission projects that we do as a company. There are condition-based projects that are looking at our existing infrastructure, how old it is, in what condition it is. What's its, what's its useful life? Do, do we need to make sure that we spend money now so that we don't have outages? And then there are competitive transmission projects, which are predominantly the big new transmission lines to do the data center work. We do both of those. This is the former. This is a condition-based, existing project, like-for-like replacement because it's old and has a lot of woodpecker holes in it. And I, I know I've said that a lot of times, but I just, I mean, it's the clearest way that I can drive home the point uh, that you're all trying to make sure that your constituents have addressed, and that is it is not our intention for this to be a prelude to anything but more reliable transmission service for R E C at the Sperryville substation.
There you go. It's, you're on the record now. That's great.
So I, I guess my point before was is that I feel like since it's fifty percent in our county, and it really affects us greatly. Um, can you guys come back?
I will take the ask back to the project.
I knew you're taking that back, but I feel like you have more power than that. And I feel like if you're sitting here today.
Unintended.
And you can say.
I agree.
Unintended. If, if you can say, we'll make that happen. You know what?
Yeah.
You can make that happen. You can sit on the phone with Verizon for like forty-five minutes and you can get that two hundred and seventy-five dollar charge that shouldn't be there off your phone after six people have told you, I can't do it. I think you can come back.
I appreciate your confidence.
And all I'm saying is, is that it is not a foregone conclusion what'll happen with the S C C, and I know that, I, I know how the state system works and it's, it's up here and now we're down here. But it would be really meaningful.
I appreciate the ask. I agree that it's a reasonable request. And I'm happy to take it back to the project team and let you know as soon as I can get a good answer for it.
Appreciate his confidence in you because I want, I want to second his confidence. You seem like the guy to get it, get it done. It's important.
It's my job to make sure you all feel like your, your concerns are being addressed. That's literally why I am in this position at the company. So I'm, I'm happy to take it back and make sure that I am forcefully addressing the request to the project team for you.
Wow.
And if you could, when you come back to tell us that you can't do it here, bring the person that told you.
I will absolutely do that.
Please do.
Now, what are, are we asking for a meeting here or are we asking for a meeting in Sperryville?
I don't think Sperryville makes sense.
Yeah, just.
I just want to be clear what we're asking for, for making an ask.
I mean, I think what I would take back to the project team is could we, could we do an open house in Rappahannock County as well? What we do is a station-based open house where we have, uh, staff from the company from different business units that address different aspects of the project. Uh, transmission planning to address the need of vegetation management, engineering, construction, environmental, uh, to talk about the permitting and the work we do. Uh, I would be there, uh, you know, we have folks to, to talk to local institutional actors who come in. We have an attorney present in case anyone who, who is impacted by the line has an attorney so that they can have those, um, you know, attorney to attorney conversations. Uh, it, it's, it's, you know, station-based folks have the opportunity to go where they need to get their questions asked. That's the format we use for those.
I know Jeff Henry from R E C would do it in a heartbeat. He wouldn't even have to ask anybody. He'd just do it. Right, Jeff?
Well, I'm happy to talk, to, to, talk to Jeff and see if he has, he has any pointers about, uh, locations other than the, the fire hall that they're not available.
Important, and I'm glad.
I appreciate it.
Ms. Comer brought it up, and I'm glad that everyone is on the same page in this regard. I mean, your back is turned to the audience.
I, I know what the, I.
Everybody would.
Not your first.
Not my first radio.
Everyone would benefit. You would benefit.
Yeah.
It's, it's important.
The, 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 the thing I'd point out just though is, I mean, the filing date is gonna be the filing date. So it's possible that if an open house, um, were, were, uh, done, it would be after the filing had already been, um, submitted. Uh, so the timing might not line up in terms of feedback prior to the filing. However, any feedback we get could, could be also submitted to the state corporation commission as they consider the process. And, you know, we're not precluding any input.
Well, it's an iterative process for about a year, right?
Yeah, correct.
Well, and you opened your presentation with, you would be happy to help our citizens, um, get their questions answered and to the right person, but I don't see a contact name, number, or email on the slide deck.
I am happy to give out my card to anyone in the room who wants it, and I will connect them with the right person at the company. If they want to submit a question directly to the project, the email address is transmissionprojects at firstenergycorp.com. And the website for the project has the eight hundred number and the email address on it as well. So if you Google Paige Sperryville First Energy, the first hit's gonna be the project page on our website with the fact sheet, the project map, the virtual open house, and the contact information.
Yeah.
I understand you're about to, you're about to make the ask again.
That's not a personal email address. That's a, that's a email address for the project. I think people want to know they're gonna get a person.
Sure, and if they are directly impacted by the line, they should have been contacted by a real estate agent for the company already, and if they haven't, I'll make sure that happens.
Okay. People, people, people probably hit you up.
Okay.
Yeah.
We look forward to good news.
Uh, brings back down to the absolute bottom level. So final structure configuration height and finish subject to final design.
Right.
Is final design achieved before the S C C filing?
Not necessarily. The engineering can be ongoing during the process of the review by the state corporation commission. And even if a designed segment has been finalized, it can be altered by negotiations with the state corporation commission through their process.
When would our citizens understand what poles are going where?
They should know almost all of that, but by the time the filing is. I mean, anyone who has a pole on their property now, they should be able to know w- w- what the, I mean, the real estate agent ought to be able to tell them what the expected height of the replacement pole is now.
I think there's some confusion in the community, um, from the newspaper who took the information on this slide that says existing height fifty to seventy-five.
Yep.
Proposed height sixty to one-ten, and then the newspaper said, well, clearly we have poles that are going from fifty to one-ten. They're doubling in height. To me, it's more likely they're going from seventy-five to one-ten.
I wish, I wish they would have spoken to our corporate communications representative.
That might not have changed what the paper put out, but, uh, that sort of information that you can share with the community.
Yeah.
Just how much typical poles are likely to grow and whether we have however many sets of poles now. And they're going to be fewer in the future because you're gonna go higher and then you can span a little bit further.
It's gonna be about one for one in terms of pole, right? The, the, the span is not changing, um, very much.
Okay.
Um, but the height is changing. I haven't seen, I haven't looked at every pole, right? But I've been a part of conversations where some landowner communications, they've reached out to me just to sort of touch base. I haven't seen fifty-foot pole height changes. I've seen four-foot pole height changes, eleven-foot pole height changes. Um, much more modest pole height changes in the ones I've seen. Now, it's thirteen point eight miles. There may be some that do significantly increase because of, you know, whatever the electrical code is that is determining what the engineers plug in and say this distance, this height.
So I think that clarity will go a long way towards the community understanding and accepting the project when they can learn what's really gonna happen. And they may know if they happen to have an easement across their property.
Yeah.
Because the real estate person's talked to them. But if they're one parcel over, nobody's talked to them.
And it's still.
They still have a pole right next to them. And so the community understanding of what is happening fifty, seventy-five to sixty-one-ten.
Yeah.
Is, is important.
No, that's fair.
And I just want to say, I understand you have a, you seem like you like your job, but you, you probably have a very difficult job. Everybody in this room and everybody in the area all use power. And we use power a lot. And you're trying to deliver things that people pay and use. Yes, and so I really understand that. It is just our job to protect our county.
You're looking out for your constituents. Absolutely. And they're looking out for, for themselves and their community. I, 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 I mean, it's like, I don't, I love this job in part because I get to be the fulcrum, right, that takes that sentiment back to your company. Uh, uh, let's go with fulcrum as opposed to pointing things at me as. But, but, but it's literally my job to take those concerns of the, of the county and of the residents back to the company and say, here's what these people have concerns about. How do we address those questions? Top of the list is, can we have an open house in Rappahannock County?
Asked five times, about five.
And, and, and at least three different residents, two of whom did not intend to speak on this subject at all when they came up to the microphone, but made it a point to, to do so.
But I really do want to.
Message received.
I wanted to say, I really appreciate you coming back and talking to us because I, the first time you were here, we did fire some questions at you.
And I have, I want to answer them, right? I mean, infrastructure projects are hard. Even ones like this, right, that are relatively simple, like-for-like.
Welcome to Rappahannock County.
Relatively, right? Yeah, no, I get it. Um, but, but you all have to live with it.
Right.
Right? And I, I respect that.
And so that's that end. I just have, I have two more questions. Can you briefly give me again, the S C C filing date and then relatively speaking, when you think that that is? So that anybody that wants to do, and if we want to submit comments.
So we've got it headed to quarter one
Uh huh.
Of twenty twenty-six, and then, and the fluctuation on that is you have to pull together all of the various components of the filing. There are multiple. There's a need testimony and environmental testimony, construct, right? So all that testimony review takes time. Um, when you jam up against the end of the year and the holidays, review processes can stretch and slow. Um, so, but what I will do is, once we have an expected filing date.
Mm-hmm.
I'll give that to you.
You're gonna give it to county administration?
I'll give it to county administration, absolutely.
Okay.
And that could, that could fluctuate, right? But once we have a, hey, we think this is the date that, excuse me.
The last date was like last year.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we had, we had an engineering change, and then we had the initial conversations with the park and the understanding that our constructibility, uh, assumptions would not work. And so we needed to rework the constructibility assumptions and the when we were gonna be able to construct and how long that was gonna take us to do it. So it's an iterative process to make sure, and in part, that's to make sure it's as minimally intrusive as possible in the construction phase.
So can I get you to commit that when you know this thing is gonna get filed, as soon as you know, you'll let him know?
Yeah.
They're gonna have to give us a notice.
I know, but I mean, this isn't like three weeks after you know. I mean, we, if, I know that people in the community are gonna I mean, I know that people in the community are going to want to comment.
They care.
And it just takes some time, maybe, maybe even to hire an attorney. Just if you want to do regulatory comments, you've got to get all that stuff done. So just if we have as much time as you have, that'd be great.
Yep.
The second thing that I wanted to ask you was, best-case scenario, how long do you think it would take before you guys are digging? Best-case scenario.
This says Q3, Q4, twenty-seven.
Q3, Q4.
Late twenty-seven.
Late twenty-seven?
Late twenty-seven.
Okay.
After we have fiber to the home.
Thank you. I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll stick around, like I said, so if anyone wants to give me their contact information so that I can get them connected to the individual conversations.
And I should remember this from your last talk with us. You're based in Ohio, is that correct?
I drove here today from West Akron, Ohio. Yes, sir.
Oh, boy. Are you going back tonight?
No, no. Winchester tonight.
Okay, good.
And then the rest of the way, I'm going to be able to pick the kid up from school tomorrow.
And remind us who's keeping you company today, please.
Oh, sure, of course. So Robert Crockett and Matt Wells from Avanta Strategies, they represent us in Richmond and help us out with some of the local engagement on our projects throughout the Commonwealth.
Please help out, oh, sorry. I was going to say, please help out Dan to get someone out here. However you can, let him know how ugly we were and that we had pitchforks and torches.
There is a place called Rappahanna County.
And we really need this.
Feed-up posted on Facebook that the month of November is the absolute worst for deer and vehicles.
So when I left Luray last November, I almost had two accidents on the drive from Luray to Winchester, the hotel, that night. I will be very careful tonight, though thankfully, it's a little bit later than their normal, you know, dinnertime.
No, the rut is on. You're in trouble.
Is it? Okay.
They're everywhere.
Yeah. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Following on the.
Maybe we should take a little recess so people can get that contact information.
Okay, that's a great idea.
They may want to hear this next item, which is directly related.
Oh, let's go ahead and cover this then. That would be great. I'm sorry.
Sorry. The next item is Electrical Transmission Line Regulatory Authority Review.
I've requested this item in reaction to some of the things that we've been hearing locally because we certainly want to help our citizens with this action in the best way that we can. And part of that is being educated about how we should respond. And so this was a reaction to my request.
Right. And as Mr. Tompkins noted, this generally is a process through the State Corporation Commission. And the narrative of this agenda item is broad, more broad than just this transmission line. As board members are aware, you have a twin 500 KB line on the other side of the county. And that corridor is targeted by PJM for more power. So that's something we'll be wanting to pay attention to for a long time. And that's not a condition project. That's a bring the electrons to the data center project. All of this is controlled by state code. There's state code both in the Local Government Section 15222. That's the zoning and subdivision chapter of the Code of Virginia. And it essentially, and I've linked everything here, it essentially requires the companies to notify the county, and the Planning Commission can participate locally. And ultimately, the county can be a party at the SCC. In addition to individual citizens, the county can be a party. That's just the Local Government Section. The real rubber meets the road in Chapter 56. That's the part that codifies the requirement for the companies to, what the Certificate of Public Need or whatever it's called. And it's broadly laid out. There are, it's pretty confusing. But the SCC has put together various guides to help citizens understand the process. And I've attached them here. The bottom line is, the transmission companies cannot modify more than a few poles or expand on the right-of-way or increase their capacity without going through the Certificate of Public Need process. And that is a protracted public carrying process. It's, I guess, quasi-judicial or fully judicial or. And it's good that we actually have SCC judges sitting now. We went for a period where we were down to one, I think, and now they're fully staffed up. For this particular line, there's yet a more specific code section. It's 56265.2 that relates solely to 138-kilovolt lines. And reading back, this was about, it was an L-Gain Power or Appalachian Power, I think, initiative. But that code section sets forth that if the transmission company gets the approval through the SCC, then there is no, it automatically satisfies any zoning requirements in the locality. So because the other code section is related to 150 and above, I guess that leaves a door open for the 138s. I don't know. But it's a, you have zero local zoning authority over this transmission line if the state grants them their Certificate of Public Need, which presumably they will after whatever negotiation happens. So it's very likely that there will be no local zoning for this project.
Seems important that you come to Rappahanna County.
I'd like to come to Rappahanna.
Good. We'd like to see you again.
I don't, I think from what I'm hearing, though, there's nothing that precludes a review of the final proposed plan or final design by the Planning Commission and the county and offering feedback to the SCC on the final design and its impacts. There's nothing to preclude that, but we just don't have local zoning authority.
Yeah, not only is there nothing to preclude it, the county is empowered to participate in the process as a party.
What's the, but really, you have to target, I would think, which would be the final design. You might write in thinking that's the right way.
Whatever's filed. So whatever is filed, you review what is filed. And then as a entity, you can decide whether there are things about that filing that you think could be improved.
Sounds good.
Then you could make that known to the SCC. And that negotiation process would include the citizens who live near the line, who have to look at the line, and the corporate kind of government entity of Rappahanna County might have its individual comment.
Yeah.
How the SCC takes all those and weighs them out on some balance, I don't know.
I really appreciate Steph taking that on and looking into this background so that we have a productive way forward and aren't spinning our wheels or trying to figure out when is the appropriate time to make our voices heard. So thank you all very much.
We do not expect to receive any zoning applications for this project.
Don't snout too much, Gary.
I'll just do a more, when the administrative law judge gets the, typically, I'm not an expert in Virginia's, broadly speaking, when Certificate of Public Meanance and Necessities are filed, the first thing that is done is a procedural schedule is set. And that procedural schedule includes a window of time for interested parties to file for intervenor status.
Sure.
And so you can review and then file by that date. Even if you miss that deadline, it is common in regulatory filings for transmission lines for parties to file to intervene out of time, right? So even the initial procedural schedule is fungible if a party wanted to intervene at a later date and the existing parties to the case did not object to that filing.
Yeah, that's why Van's right. To the extent possible, we need to know when the application kicks off the, kicks off the.
You'll know when the filing is going to happen. And then once the filing happens, there'll be a period of time before it's even assigned to an ALJ and a period of time when the ALJ considers with the applicant and other statutory participants in the proceeding what the procedural schedule will be like, including how long the window is for that initial filing for intervenor status.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would say that we need to put a star on Eldon's watch list of anything transmission line electric.
Oh, yeah. State law could change.
Yep.
You never know.
Probably will, given the power ask.
Yeah, absolutely.
Stuff's changing.
So what Van quoted, just in case you guys are interested, there's a thenewenergycrisis.com. There's four parts to this series that was, I think, Faukeer County paid to have these news articles, or articles written. The gentleman that I spoke to a while back, his name is Christopher Stern, and he wrote Part Four. And that's where I got the quote from the REC Board Chair, "There are going to be brownouts by a generator." So I just, I just want to be very open and honest to our citizens that things that we can't control necessarily are coming, but we can prepare individually for them, so.
We have our very own transmission line, so it makes us good.
Yep.
True.
Well, that's, well, the other one, we don't actually pull any power from the Dominion line, but.
There's a second feed in Sperryville, so.
Oh, right. But it's not, it's not above 138 yet.
All right.
Do you want to take a recess now?
Yes.
Thanks a lot. Drive safely.
Thank you.
Drive safely. Thank you all. Thank you all.
I got the hook! Yeah, well, I saw you were coming around, so I thought it was safe. All right, at this point, we're going back to G3, which is the Subdivision Process Notification Policy. Mr. Curry.
I started to give an introduction earlier, and the board wisely decided to defer to the evening. So as board members are aware, you adopted revised subdivision ordinance that was amended to reflect state law changes. During the discussions about that change, there was suggestions from community members that notification process for subdivisions should be carefully reviewed and considered. And the board asked staff to develop policy to that end. There's a draft policy provided in, attached to board docs in your meeting packet. And the sole intent of this policy, titled Subdivision Process Notification Requirements, is to identify the type of notifications that are required for different types of subdivision action. And we define that somewhat broadly. Because today, technically, a property line vacation, a boundary line adjustment, even some kind of family division are not subdivisions. Because baked into the definition of subdivision today is that parcels larger than fifty acres in size are not considered a subdivision. And I think that's, we probably need to work on some of those definitions going forward, particularly so that you can have some more prescriptive rules on what is required for boundary line adjustments and vacations to make sure the right things are on a plat that's submitted so it can be reviewed appropriately before it goes to record in the clerk's office. But that's the second step of all this. We talked at the last meeting that you adopted amendments to the zoning ordinance that reflected state code, and it made sense to go back afterwards and begin to look at the code section through a different lens from a practicality. And just to refresh that ordinance to make it very clear what things are needed on a plat and making sure we have the different categories or classifications of application separated in the ordinance and clarified. So this policy leads that effort, and it does so by defining five different types of subdivision application broad. So the first is vacating a lot line, which typically happens when a property owner owns two adjacent parcels and they want to make those two parcels one by simply deleting a line. So there is no clear process for that in your subdivision ordinance. And it would be good to do that. And I'll go through the definitions here first, and then we'll talk about the notification that would be required for each one of these or suggested. The second is a boundary line adjustment. That's when you have two parcels and the line, two or more parcels, and the line between them is being adjusted. So maybe you have fifty acres, and one is ten acres and the other is forty, and you want to end up with two parcels and they're both twenty-five. So that is a process that happens today. Practically speaking, it's exempt from the subdivision ordinance today, but we do require, for a plat to go to record, we do require certain things to be met to ensure that it will meet the ordinance, zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance when you're done. Like, are you creating a lot that is, meets the minimum size for the zoning ordinance? For example, in agriculture, the minimum lot size is two acres. So you shouldn't be able to do a boundary line adjustment that creates a lot that goes from conforming status to non-conforming status. Are you moving a line such that it is now placing a building in a location that doesn't meet the minimum yard requirements or setbacks? So those sort of things should be considered. So that's a BLA. Those happen all the time, literally. Family subdivisions are specifically defined by state code, and different localities are allowed to do different things. Because we are located next to a county that has grown more than 10% in the decennial census, we are allowed the most leeway in family divisions, which basically you can make up the rules that you want. Otherwise, you're really only allowed to do one per parcel. And we allow five by right and then a sixth by special exception. We only are allowed to have that five and the extra one because we're next to those fast-growing counties. And so state law, part of that process, requires notification of adjacent property owners. That's the only type of subdivision in state law that requires notification, which is interesting. In our code, a family subdivision, essentially, the only thing that that does for the owners is that it gets them out of the maximum dwelling density requirement. So one home per twenty-five acres in agriculture. You don't need to meet the one home per twenty-five acres if it's a family division. You still have to meet the minimum lot size, the width, and all the other things. And there's special access laws that go with that, which are really kind of poor. But it does, the code is odd. It doesn't say minimum. You have to have a twenty-foot right-of-way, which is odd. So family divisions, they happen from time to time.
This does not include the SC that you can get for the sixth one?
It does, I guess.
It just doesn't state it.
No, it's just what it is. Yeah. One forty-seven, one forty-seven thirty-six does.
Yeah, I got you.
And it's actually one thirty-seven forty-six B, and then there's a whole bunch of things under it. And then Michelle and I thought it made sense to bifurcate subdivisions into two general categories based on the impact. And our code doesn't contemplate this now, but we think it should. So this policy would lead that eventual change. And the subdivision ordinance, if it were to change, might require different things of an applicant for these different scenarios.
And is a minor-major bifurcation tied to the change in state code in this regard?
No, because state code doesn't contemplate it, the difference. But in our mind, there is a difference. Your most recent code and current allowed administrative subdivisions for subdivisions of three lots or less.
Right.
It didn't speak at all to public roads. So you could have a three-lot subdivision with a public road, and it would still be administratively approvable. We thought that's probably not a great idea to have that in the minor. If you're going to go through a public road process and all of that, it should be major. And so what this now says is, an application to subdivide a parcel or parcels into three or fewer parcels for which no new public street or extension of public street is required. So pretty simple. That would have, and these are for the purpose of notification now, but in the future, in a revised ordinance, it might have other requirements attached to these categories, general categories. And then a major subdivision is everything else.
How about, but under, under Item Four, it seems like you're. How about, but, under, under item four, it seems like you're leaving a gap unless I'm not, unless I can't see the language, because a minor subdivision assumes three or fewer parcels and no new public street or essential public street, but then major, shouldn't it say, "An application to subdivide a parcel or parcels, three or fewer, or any number?"
Yeah, so, or any number. Yeah, that's the piece.
Yeah.
So if you have a public street involved and it's one, then we're, we're going to make sure we notify everybody around in as many ways as we can. And, and of course, the submission requirements are going to be much more detailed, because you have to meet the VDOT standards and all of that, and it's, it's going to be a process. So with, with those founding classifications, and let's say that there couldn't be other classifications, these are fairly typical in other communities. There are other categories like court-ordered partitions, where a judge splits up a parcel for whatever reason. We pretty much just have to accept them. Now, whether they're buildable or not is, is a totally different question, but we, we are, have to accept them. So the notification, you can see across the top are those classifications, I just went through the definitions, and then down, the rows are different types of notification that have been discussed, I think by public and staff. Posting application materials on the county website is, is kind of the baseline foundation level. Then post a sign on the parcel, like the step-in signs used for zoning, but this would contemplate a different type of, same type of sign, different color combinations, different wording, to differentiate from a zoning action.
A crazy question, the, the boundary line adjustment nomenclature, obviously, we dealt with that for a couple of years in a totally different context, meaning county and town. And so my question is there, is that the, I understand what a boundary line adjustment means in terms of.
It's a very standard term in the industry.
Yeah, and I just worry, I don't know if there's a, okay, so, on that other front, that macro boundary.
And normally, we talk about annexation and things like that.
Which is now more kinder, kinder and gentler, they'd say, boundary line adjustment. My question is, in that context, do we need to add specificity to this definition above?
Say not, because.
Because it's, it's.
It's tied to subdivision.
Okay.
But it's tied to this definition.
Right, which is, okay.
And, and we think that the future code should lay out a very specific definition and lay out very specific rules for application for those. Even though we require them today, it's questionable, quite frankly, whether we can, because we have been in the second breath exempted, because they're less than 50 acres. Or, yeah, okay.
Over the six years that we've been listening to different zoning and seeing where neighbors are supposed to be notified, I hear at least annually, I think, neighbors not being notified and being caught off-guard. Is that anything that we can improve?
Well, I think there are a few different things that you hear. For zoning actions, there are many situations for which the county is compelled to notify adjacent property owners, which is clearly, is carefully defined in code. It includes across the street, across the railroad, which doesn't really apply to us. And we go by our tax maps, which are not great, but is what best we have. And Michelle has a process to do that. Independent from that, we do suggest that applicants contact their neighbors. And when we ask them if they contact their neighbors, and they can fill it out, they, they may or may not write on their application who they contacted. That's not the official mandated notification. That mandated notification is done and carefully tracked for every application, and we have those records in the zoning file. I'm not aware, outside of an odd tax map situation where we've missed on those. For zoning actions, subdivision actions do not require adjacent property notification, not by state law, not by our local code, our old one, our new one, it's not required. These are magisterial acts. If you satisfy the requirements, you're allowed to divide your parcel. The zoning ordinance lays out that you're allowed to have two-acre minimum, they can, the lots have to be 200 feet at road frontage and so much depth and all these different things. If you meet that, you're supposed to be able to do it. We recognize that community members and adjacent property owners probably have a vested interest to at least know what's going on. We do know case law makes it clear there is no cause of action for a third party to intervene in a subdivision matter. And we double-checked that recently, whereas they might in a zoning action if they're aggrieved, but they do not in a, in a subdivision action. And those are probably some of the reasons why the state code has shifted more towards this designated agent process. It's not supposed to be a political process. The political legislative process is setting up the rules.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
How big is my lot allowed to be? What type of road must I have? What width, what depth? You know, if it's a public water and store, what are the rules for that? If it's private, then what are the rules for that? Do I need 100% reserved drain field? All these different things. Those are the rules of the road that the Board sets. And once you set those, it's then, should be predictable for a developer to identify a parcel that maybe is RR5, and know they can go in, and they, if they meet the rules, they can create a whole bunch of lots that meet RR5 requirements. It's not a political process. It's laid out, you've already zoned it RR5. And here, most recently for us, you had another code section that identified the fact that the right-of-way serving that road needed to be 50 feet for a subdivision, and you retained that, that hasn't changed. And, and as we've noted publicly, we missed that, you know? We did it. But that is your current law, and if that's what you want the law to be, then that is a gate that people have to go through. It's an administrative gate. And so the subdivision ordinance as amended does include a process whereby anybody can submit an appeal to the designated agent, and they can point out things that they think the agent has missed. It's not a right-of-legal action, but it is an opportunity to say, "Hey, dummy, you didn't look at 147, whatever the number is, this says you have to have a 50-foot right-of-way." In which case, hopefully, we would read that and say, you know, we screwed up, and now we're going to make it right. So anyway, back to this. We don't recommend any sort of special notification for a vacating lot line. We don't recommend it for a boundary line adjustment. We, of course, recommend it for family division, because notice to adjacent landowners is required by state law. We think for minor, so this is three or less, no road, no public roads, we should put the applications on the website and post a sign, so people know that the application's on the website. So if you see the sign, it means go to the website, and it gives you the, the URL to go to, and then you can read all you want about that project. For a major, which is more than three and/or a road, public road, then we'll do all of them. We'll post the application, post the sign, put it in the newspaper twice, like we do for special exceptions or rezonings, and then send a notice to adjacent landowners. So the section that follows this elaborates what those things mean, just to make sure there is as little confusion as possible.
On the, I don't recall what Michelle said about requests for a subdivision, but if I remember correctly, even requests for, you know, small, small number of parcels in a subdivision, those requests are infrequent at past, is that correct?
She, in her eight-plus years, has never received what would be considered a major.
Right.
And maybe has received one would be considered a minor.
So here's what I would.
And I don't know if we got there, I probably didn't get any minors either, because the Tom Taylor was a recent one to start.
I think this is really well-executed, and it, it makes a lot of sense, the only thing I would say. And I can see the gradations of notices, that notification types, and it visually makes sense, but I would argue, because this is Rattanah County, that both minor and major should be treated the same from a notice perspective. That's just my, that's my immediate reaction, because we all recognize, whether minor or major, based on this, these definitions, these are so infrequent, that there's no, I mean, that the cost difference in notice, noticing such actions is really de minimis.
Yeah, and we can recoup costs through the application fee.
Yep.
It's, it's a time, and as you point out, they aren't very frequent, and if they were to become frequent, then I guess the Board could decide that, you know, perhaps different notifications needed, or the definitions should switch, or something like that.
Did your, did your minor-major definitions drive the, the sort of different sets of notification procedures?
Yeah, and this is way more than we do now, or have been doing, if we had many of these. And it's more than state law requires. And so it aligns with what was that administrative approval process before, for which, you know, the community and adjacent property owner, absent talking to their neighbor, would never know it's happening. Now, however, if there was more than four, and it had, more than three, and had to go to the planning commission, well, then they would know it's happening by virtue of a planning commission agenda or something like that. Not because they got a notification, but because it would be on an agenda, and they might understand that. But I want to reiterate, these are not "Mother May I." These are, "I am following your rules, I am doing this, and if you don't approve your, my division according to your rules, I'm taking you to court, and then the court will tell you, 'Do it.'"
I understand, but we got here because, because of this, this feeling that we were being bullied by, by the, by the state legislature into submission, and I think we've got a ton of thoughtful citizens, and no doubt we would, would have heard from MK Ishi if she had been alive to tell us, but we heard from a lot of her friends and people who think like she does, who said, "Hey, regardless of what the state says you must do, you should still put people on notice." So mildly, again, I really applaud the effort here, and I, I just feel like the minor-major bifurcation of that broad definition of a subdivision and the related notice requirements, I don't know that we even need to be that overwrought in, in the way it's laid out. I think just make them the same, whatever, I mean.
I think that's a good idea. Do you want to make a motion?
Sure.
We would like to keep the definitions separate, just to be as that leader.
Yeah, keep the separate, just put two, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead, and I assume that, okay, yeah, just give me one second here. Yeah, so I'll put forward a motion to, that we adopt Board Supervisors Policy 851 with the modification that the application type table be changed to mark both newspaper and adjacent landowner notification for, with respect to both minor and major subdivision actions by a landowner. So it's just a modification of the table to include two additional axes. And I, again, really like the way you laid that out. With also one small change in the first definition, just change, just because it's my pet peeve and Ms. Bruce got on us about proofreading, I believe that between contiguous parcels, the word "which" should either be preceded by a comma, or "which" should be changed to "that." And it's true, and you can shake your head, but I'm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So "which," which should always have, which would you prefer?
I would just make it clean and just change "which" to "that."
"Which" to "that," got it.
Yeah.
That's a motion. Motion, do we have a second?
We'll second that motion.
Do we have a second discussion?
With thanks to staff for capturing the level of detail that we discussed in meetings, and also, there is now a standing agenda on the planning commission, agenda, there's a standing agenda item to review any submissions, should there be one.
Excellent.
Great, that's awesome. I think that's the best we could do.
Yep.
I'll just, let me also point out that on the webpage, now on the right, there is this tab that says "Active Zoning Subdivision," that drops us over to the, what is now the zoning public hearing information page. That'll be broadened to expand to both.
Excellent.
At the bottom.
Okay.
At the bottom here.
What?
There was a tab at the bottom that said zoning.
No, it's, it's not at the bottom.
If you go back to that tab at the bottom, active subdivision notification.
It's right here.
Yep, and scroll, click that.
Hit that?
Yep, click it, and then scroll all the way to the bottom, and there's a separate section for if you get the, at the very, very bottom, yep, newly submitted applications.
Yeah, that's, that's just before they're complete, because people like Karen Hunt want to see the application before it's even complete for zoning, and so we added incomplete applications there, so that she could see them before they were ready for primetime. This is different for subdivisions. If somebody submits a subdivision application, as you're aware from the timetables, we take it. If you have a junk application, we take it, we have to review it, we have to identify all the deficiencies. So we aren't, can't bin them in a category of incomplete. That's, you know, that's kind of a problem, but that's what we have to do. So we'll accept it, we'll post it, it'll go through the process, the timeline, calendars start, days start ticking off, and we need to tell them they, you know, missed the whole section of the ordinance or something, and.
It's a rolling gunfight until you get them out the door.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary. And Michelle.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, Art.
Thanks, Art.
Thank you, Art.
It was fun. Time flies when you're having fun.
It does.
All right, next is Chester Gap Road cluster mailbox damage, and I asked.
Bless you.
I asked that this be added. The Chester Gap community has boxes all the way up the road, there's some at the firehouse, there's, it's all the way up, and the citizens that live there decided that they would rather do these cluster boxes, instead of asking the mail carrier to be at a safety risk having to go to every house on Chester Gap.
Well, they probably wouldn't go to the private roads. They would just go to the end of the.
Yep. So on, let's see, I think it was October 11th, this happened, and there are 54 citizens impacted by this damage that has now been completely removed by the Front Royal Post Office. There was confusion as to who owned them and who should take care of replacing them. Gary and I spoke with a gentleman in Front Royal. We also tried to speak with, I think we did, but they basically said they were going to go back to Front Royal, the folks in Maryfield, and determined that through that conversation, if we waited for them to put in a work order to replace the boxes and the pedestals, it could take months, because it's the post office. Again, this impacts 54 of my citizens in Chester Gap, and so the original ask from Front Royal was, "You guys get the mailboxes, and we'll schedule installing them." And he sent us a link that basically was close to $10,000 by the time everything was done, which is a lot of money, and one, the citizens don't, I, I don't believe they should have to pay $10,000, even though it's divided by 54, but I didn't want them to have to wait the months for the post office to have to do it, so.
So right now, they have to go to the Front Royal Post Office to get their mail?
Yep, and there's comments all over the Facebook about having to wait 30 minutes in line after they come home from work and all, you know? I agree, it's not a great scenario. I also agree that $10,000 was a lot of money. So in speaking with Lieutenant Jenkins, she had a contact in Culpeper, Daniel Ellis, who Gary and I spoke with, and he happened to get approval. who Gary and I spoke with, and he happened to get approval to share or to give to us. They have, I wrote it down somewhere, yep, a 16-slot box and two 12-slot boxes, so that covers about 40. They're, they've been in the basement in Culpeper, he got approval from his boss to give them to us, so I think they're going to be picked up this week.
That's a definite possibility.
Definite possibility. We are still waiting to hear, because Daniel thought Front Royal had one that was salvageable that would get us up to the 54.
Probably the one that's on its side right here.
Probably. Front Royal was hoping to get a total of 64 that would allow for some growth, but right now, I'm kind of taking what we can get and, and put together. We'll have to buy pedestals and coordinate with the Front Royal Post Office to have them installed, and the key to each of the boxes would have to be replaced, and that would be, from what we heard, about approximately $30 per customer for the postal service, just for the lock.
If the old lock cylinders don't fit the new lock cylinders, there's a lot of ifs and.
Ifs and men's.
Rekeying.
So where I thought I was going to be asking for $10,000 with hopes that insurance will ultimately cover this, we don't know. The sheriff's office is diligently working this case and has more information as of Friday, I'm being told. So ultimately, I'm hoping we have insurance that's going to cover it anyway, but I would like to get permission, a vote, to allow us to cover up to the $2,500 level, to get this fixed with the used boxes, and when insurance comes back, have money that the county provided paid back through the insurance.
And whose insurance would it be?
It's a vehicle accident. I'm not, I don't know how we would get that money, and we're not.
If the sheriff's office goes through and does find the person that caused the damage.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't, we don't know.
We don't know that we'll get the insurance money.
We didn't lose anything.
I don't mean to sound cold, but it sounds like you have 40 to 50 people here who need to replace their mailbox. So they just need to pay in $200 each and get their mailboxes replaced. And I would say, this to me, is a, is a bitter pill to swallow, because I, I represent Piedmont District, and more specifically, the village of Sperryville, where we had an issue with our wa, with our sewage treatment plant, and whenever I appealed to this board for the, for the doubling of people's rates, our rates have doubled, it is now $300 a quarter for just a single homeowner to pay their sewer bill in the village, and it fell on deaf ears on this board, and I was told, well, that's the cost of flushing your toilet. I wish I only had to pay $200. I wish I only had to pay $200. This is the cost of having a mailbox. I'm sorry, you need to replace your own mailbox.
I, I have just a couple clarifying questions. So, I, I agree with much of what Ms. Smith just said, because if kids drive by my mailbox and smash it one Halloween night, like, the next morning, I'm, I'm purchasing my mailbox and my husband's replacing it. Who owns these? Who, like, who owns these?
It was a big mystery. Nobody seemed to know, the post office owns them and put them up, apparently at or about the time that the post office closed up there. I thought John McCarthy would certainly know, he, he didn't know, but the Front Royal Post Office did tell us that they own them. There are many situations where they're privately owned, like in an apartment complex, that's not the case here. I asked VDOT, who pulled the land use permit? And the answer was, we don't require land use permits for mailboxes, so nobody pulled it.
It was probably the same organization that used to maintain the roads. It was probably that same group of people that's no longer in existence, and it's disbanded, disbanded because they thought that there was no need for them to exist any longer. They probably did projects like this in the roads, and now they're no longer in existence. We learned in our community outreach meeting in Chester Gap, there are a lot of needs in that community, and those people should get together and discuss them, and this should be at the top of the list. I don't mean to sound unkind, I just would have a hard time explaining to people in Sperryville why we're paying, as users, 100% for our brand-new sewage treatment plan, and yet Chester Gap's getting $140,000 for paid personnel, you know, new mailboxes, you know, going to get help with problems with their roads. You know, we have to be even-handed here. We all want to help fire and rescue, that's certainly appropriate, but this is, this is not a hardship. This is $200 out of pocket, and I understand that for some people, that's a lot of money, but that's what the benevolent fund is for. So if there's people that can't afford it, the benevolent fund can help individuals fund projects up to $500. So I, I really encourage people in Chester Gap to get together and, and work on many challenges facing their community.
But we have 40 boxes, Culpeper has 40 boxes for us, right?
Yep.
So then that leaves 14.
We would like to have 64, it's a definite 54 need.
And it's a growing area, they're going to need more, they need to figure this out.
That's why they've said 64, the post office said they would like to have 64 there.
So are they allowed to each individually have mailboxes?
Well, no, because they're private roads, they wouldn't have them down, they'd be all stacked up on.
Wait, mail won't drive down private roads?
No, they don't. They'll have, they'll have all the, all the boxes lined up on Chester Gap Road where it intersects, or one of the other side roads, where it intersects the private road.
Did you just say that you don't know who the landowner is?
The landowner, that's in a fee simple, VDOT right-of-way. Yeah, the post office said they own them, the boxes.
And the, oh.
You know, when, when Chester Gap Road was straightened out, it was, the right-of-way was widened to 50 feet.
And the post office doesn't have insurance on them?
I mean, the, the Front Royal Post Office guy called us and asked the, out of the blue, and asked us if, you know, we owned them or could fix, help fix them, and we said, well, it's not our, I said, it's not ours, somebody else's.
And they're just caught in this, one, bureaucracy, and two, nobody really wants to take it on from a post office standpoint. The gentleman in Culpeper has been extremely helpful, but I'm just trying to get this done.
Yeah, what, so you mentioned $2,500 or something, or, I mean, we've, we've talked about some big numbers, $500 here, but no, my question is, how, what's the difference between the $2,500 and the $8,100?
$8,100 was the, is the purchase price for.
For all 54, brand new.
For all brand-new mailboxes with pedestals.
But then trying to not have to.
What we might have now, as a community, is that box, it's on its side if it still works, and three used ones from Culpeper without pedestals, would have to somehow find pedestals that work with them, or manufacture them, and stick them in the ground.
So, but what I hear here is like a bureaucratic sinkhole, where there used to be some coordination up there that got these there in the first place.
Correct.
Whatever was there, whatever entity figured out how to put that there.
I think it was a consolation prize for when the post office closed in, on the mountain.
That might be right.
A consolation prize from whom?
From the US Postal Service.
To an HOA or to?
Well, it's, it's, how are we going to get our mail if you're going to close our post office?
Right.
We have to go to the Front Royal now, and they're like, no, we'll put these cluster mailboxes here, up at the fire station, there's a bunch, and then one other place.
I'm just trying to run out of scenarios, so imagine that goes away. How are all those landowner, or how are all the people that have houses that need mail up there, can they individually go to VDOT and put a, sink a mailbox in there?
Uh, in that location?
Yeah.
Probably.
I mean, how would you even, how would?
You don't need a land use permit for, for a mailbox, like, you just stick it up, make sure the post office knows where it is, on a, on a public road.
Yeah, right, right, but you have to ask the post office, correct? That's what I had to do, when I, when I, because my, my house didn't have one.
Well, I mean, they would have to, certainly they'd have to know it's there.
Yeah, but I, I'm fairly certain that I had to ask that, that the boss had.
Yeah.
But I, but I hear what you're doing, just trying to figure this, help these people.
Right.
Because there's no coordination up there, so.
The post office came to us saying, here's $8,100, you order them and we'll put them up.
Right, which, I mean, to Ms. Smith's point, it's like, okay, hold on a second. What, what is, what, what is the way to help these folks up there to do this, but get them to fund this? How do you do that?
Well, it might.
In your, in your, sorry, don't, okay?
So 54 people need their mailboxes, we have 40 for F R E E, right? Okay, so then.
Plus maybe that.
Okay, but let's pretend we don't have that, so then it's $2,000, is it $2,000 for the other?
$2,300.
23, divided by 54 people, plus the $30 for the key, is less than 100 bucks a person, right?
The agenda item says $8,100.
That was to buy all new, all new boxes.
It's 30, if you go 64, it's 38 bucks, plus 30 bucks, 68 bucks, including the key where you can't.
So, I really, I really appreciate you working with Culpeper, that's, that's pretty awesome, especially when you think about, it ha, this happened October 11th, think about the speed of government, and you're working with Culpeper, Front Royal, and the USPA, you know, so I just want to express some sincere appreciation for your, your hustle. But I do wonder, I mean, less than 100 bucks a person.
And I don't want to be in the business of owning mailboxes.
Yeah, I, I might know someone who could fix those boxes.
They're actually, the Front Royal Post Office folks have collected it, and they're seeing what can be salvaged.
Yep.
So the goal was to expedite this, instead of just saying sorry for months, in winter in Chester Gap, you're going to have to go all the way down to Front Royal, after you get home from work, get your stuff and go all the way back up, if we could do it in a way that this board could get behind.
So what happens if you only got the 40? How do they, how, how do, how do they decide which, yeah, which 14 up there don't?
I don't know.
I mean, do people get, I mean, when we moved to the county, we had to get mail at the P O box, and we just came to town once a week. I, I don't really think that's a hardship, I don't mean to sound cold or unkind, but going to the.
Been on Chester Gap.
But going to the post office once a week is not a hardship, and you're going to town anyway to get groceries and take your trash. I mean, people in Chester Gap don't stay on Chester Gap indefinitely.
Well, so what can we do to help these people, like, and say, if, if we don't need to, is there a way that we got 40 for free, and I see what the problem is, is that there's nobody in charge up there, and it's just like this, uh.
Yep.
So what, is there any way we can facilitate this process and say, hey, guys, we got 40 for free, you all need to kick in X amount, this is when it can get done, just some coordination, some help, like, some guidance for them to make sure.
And I don't even know if they could go to the post office and say, I'm one of the 54, here's my $58, please put me in a mailbox. I don't, I don't know how that process would work.
Yeah, I, I really don't want to run the project, quite frankly, but.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
That's where it's headed, that's where, you know, nobody else, everybody else is stepping back as fast as they can, and they're just not going to get fixed.
Can they deliver the mail, like, to the fire station, and people come pick it up there?
Well, there are series of these boxes at the fire station.
At the fire station.
So these are for the people lower down on the mountain.
I mean, I, I do, I, and I think this might be what you're saying, Van, I do want us to act on those 40 immediately.
Yep.
But like, can I just Google, I can get a, I have, if, if my mailbox was smashed on Halloween night, it would cost me $67 from Wayfair, so.
Is that with the.
$68 to include a key and all of that, I don't think that is.
Is there any objection from VDOT that is, be put, concerned there's like no clear record of how they ended up in the right-of-way in the first place?
Well, mailboxes are allowed in the right-of-way.
Oh, okay, so, so.
Can I have political signs on them?
Can I say something?
Um, sure.
Then they're done this, and, and it.
Cluster boxes?
And it was about my homeowners association, I will admit.
Which we don't have.
No, but we had somebody, two different years hit mailboxes, both of them 16-plus boxes altogether. The post office told us, so it's interesting, which I've heard from you all, that starting in 2014, the post office no longer considered they owned any boxes like those, and it's your problem.
They did tell us they owned them.
Yeah, well, that's interesting, because, and they did not facilitate anything, we had to do it, and we got it covered by insurance, so, I mean, that's a whole nother story, but there was no charge for people to get keys, we just told them when we had gotten the boxes up. And the minute I read the thing about the boxes, I said, well, that's 5,000 apiece at least, and that's about what we paid, and they gave us the names of the people that were the special people that could put the boxes up and make sure there's concrete that was right, and the posts were all in. But I'm just saying is, they, they wrote off everything about the boxes, so you're lucky if they're offering some used boxes, but I find the story is different here than I've heard, and we were lucky as an organization, but I'm just saying is, this, this is the reality.
Yep.
So I'm with Christine, let them pay for it.
Thank you, Nita.
Yes, sir.
Deb, so, do the folks in Chester Gap pay for these? Do they have an, like, an annual fee, like it's P O box? Do they, are they paying the?
I don't believe so, but I don't know that answer.
I think there'd probably be a fee if they lost their key or something.
Right, but that, but that's not passing.
Yep.
That would be really interesting information to find out.
Like a P O box.
Yeah, like, imagine that three people in the past three years have lost a key and they got charged for it. So I want to do whatever we need to do to facilitate helping these folks if there's a bureaucratic maze to get through, but I, I think that having them, getting the free ones is great, and then having, get them, yeah, to chip in, I think, I guess this.
Somehow we've got to coordinate with Front Royal, and unfortunately, they haven't been as.
Yeah, but I mean, the, the, fair point, it's like, if my mailbox gets hit, which is that, I pay for it, right?
Yep.
My mailbox didn't get hit on Halloween, by the way.
Yours did?
I did, it didn't, it's just, I wanted to clarify.
Thank you for the clarification.
Where was your son?
Um, okay, so I think if Mr. Curry will join me on the phone with Front Royal, we can clarify a bunch of this, hopefully, quickly, and if it's a, the post office puts something in all of their mail that basically says, we're going to get you new keys in a new box, or used box, but, I mean, like, I get in my post office box, the rent for the year, they should be able to put an envelope and.
And, but that, and that doesn't stop you, you can move on the Culpeper, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And the Culpeper, like, it's, they have Culpeper locks, so Culpeper wanted all their locked.
Well, I just, I know her concern is.
They were taking all that out, and once all that was out, they were going to be available to pick.
Right, I just know the concern is, winter is coming, and is getting, doing something for them, you know, soon, so if, if we are able to act on the free ones all the while, we're trying to facilitate, you know, and coordinate with Front Royal, or, you know, whomever, I think that would make Chester Gap, you know, rest easy and.
The best bet is finding the person that did it, having their insurance papers, brand-new ones.
Absolutely, yeah. Pretty lovely, but.
Does the sheriff have a lead or anything? Do they have information?
They're working the case, is what they want to release.
And let's not forget, the bureaucratic nightmare that was.
That's what worries me.
A single mailbox in the town of Washington, when the post office project was delayed for so long.
The drop box.
To get a blue drop box for an entire town, the county seat of our county.
We had to go to Washington.
I had to go, I don't even remember who finally helped me, but, just, I mean, so what you're experiencing is, is not unusual, so.
I, I do, I do think that, yeah, have that bureaucratic red tape, like, helping these folks manage that.
This is similar to people moving to Chester Gap, not realizing that they own a land on a private road that they're responsible for, that there are strings attached to your home buying decisions.
But, but I, but. But I, but I, but I think that that's what Ms. Smith was saying too, is, is that like, there are these things that start to happen and it's all of a sudden like the Sperryville rates doubled for a very specific reason. That happens and people don't know how to fix that for very specific reasons. And then they look to us.
Well, Debbie's, Debbie's been doing the work and.
Yeah, and, and they look to Debbie to say, hey, can you help us? And nobody has any idea. And I think the average citizen just looks at that and they're like, the government owns it. It's like, who's the government? Well, you are. And these people, you know, it's like, well, actually, no. So I do wanna facilitate.
Not this government.
Not this government. So, anyway.
Well, again, working at the speed of government inside a month, you got forty free boxes, I say, good job.
We're gonna keep, keep pushing.
Thank you, thank you, Lieutenant Jenkins.
Yes, that was huge.
And I'm sure given the pioneering spirit of Chester Gap, they'll figure out a way to get them up quick.
Um, board committee reports. Recreational facilities authority.
So I think the most important thing to report back, this is hot off of the presses. Um, news about the playground grant. We, they, um, have been moved, their application has been selected to move forward for the full request. So, um, fingers crossed that after a, a site inspection and, you know, whatever steps come next, that, um, that we get the full request.
Which I think they wanted to schedule the inspection for a couple of weeks from now.
November twelfth, yeah, November twelfth. So also, um, I do wanna report on a committee that I don't normally co, um, report on, um, but do sit on. They is Virginia Career Works. I am going to the Clio Board Retreat next week, um, which I think is just really timely, given, um, today's, uh, presentation about food and beverage. Um, I look forward to really advocating for those resources to, to come a little bit further this way, 'cause they really do like to sit in the Charlottesville-Albemarle, um, location. So that's all I have to report on my committees.
Thank you. Uh, public safety, I don't believe we met, did we?
Yeah, it should be December.
Mr. Whitson, do we have anything on public safety that you wanna, okay. Uh, planning commission.
We met, there was one, uh, item which was tabled pending additional information related to, um, division on, you know, one of the commercial lots over by the bank.
Re-subdivision.
Re-subdivision, thank you, Gary.
And fire levy board.
Nothing, nothing reported down.
Okay. All right, uh, going into reports, treasurers. Normally look at cash and.
Flat.
Well, it's looking like that because, um, I haven't paid my personal property. But the, the rate of, uh, revenue from the taxes is the same as the rate of expenses, is what you're seeing, that we've, our cash position is flat.
What's the arrow going up that says?
I was just trying to tell you that that blue dot is FY twenty-six.
Oh, I thought you meant it should have been.
I didn't make it, but that's my interpretation.
Gotcha.
What you can see is that we're retracing things, right?
What's the, if you go to the end of the line, the lines between, what years, what years of graph at the very bottom and, so twenty, FY nineteen?
We dropped off the first couple of years that were on here, um, which were in the red.
Okay, so twenty nineteen, what's that, um, on the far right of the table?
This is approaching what your fund balance is, there's other puts and takes for the accounting, but six point two million.
Okay, and then what is it?
Eleven point three.
Okay, so that's the difference between the two years. And, and where on that graph on the far right, what, uh, what point in time is that again?
This is end of June, end of the fiscal year.
Oh, okay, right, so the lowest.
Your fund balance is at the end of the year, but there are some other accruals and whatnot that happened that would make the fund balance number be different than your cash balance at that time. It's a proxy.
And October, October is traditionally our lowest.
Yeah, it depends on how quickly the tax bills get out and how quickly.
Okay, so I guess what I'm asking is, just 'cause I can't see it from here, the difference between nine, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-five?
In October?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going back to the end of the, end of the fiscal year. Um, is, is the difference between?
Yeah, that was six point two to eleven point three.
Six, so it's a five million dollar difference, okay.
Did you see any others?
And, and then, um, this report does include an accounting of your fund balance policy and, you know, after you layer off all these things, what's left, I think the answer is about one point eight million.
I thought the building permit was interesting because it looks like we're almost neck and neck with previous year.
Depends on the metric, but for like.
There was one that was.
Homes, yep.
Yep.
Thirty-something. Commercial permits.
All right. You don't have anything else? Do you have anything you need to highlight? Any other reports you guys wanna see? If not, I'm gonna move to matters presented by the board.
So I have a few things. One, I wish I thought to bring it up while the, the, um, courtroom was, was full. But, um, the wrap at home they are doing, um, they're having, um, like a preparedness, emergency preparedness workshop on November fifth, so on Wednesday. Um, so she was, uh, Ms. Wanger was worried that word had not gotten out, um, just due to a few mix-ups here and there. So I definitely wanted to make sure that I mentioned it so that you all could spread it, um, around to your constituents. It looks like a pretty, um, a pretty impressive panel.
Who is it? I, I just happened to look at the newspaper article, but I was curious to see who was.
It's County Administrator Gary Curry.
Oh, man.
And local EMS and fire, and fire rescue personnel and, and Sheriff Connie Compton. Like I said, a pretty impressive panel on emergency preparedness. Um, so I wanted to share that. Mr. Whitson had alluded to it earlier in the day, but it was on my list of things, um, to discuss or put out there at matters. Um, as you all know, Laura Ridge kicked off their power line program and I was real, I was just beaming with pride because Rappahannock County was so well represented. I'm not gonna name the other counties that chose not to send anyone to that, but both our chair and our vice chair attended that and we have, we have students in that cohort. So very well represented. I was very proud, thank you. And then the last thing, I really don't know, um, I hope I'm not stealing anyone's thunder, um, but I just can't wait, I can't stay quiet about it any longer. Um, you might remember a couple months ago, um, Laurie Smith of Businesses of Rappahannock and I, and I met with Kelly Weaver from V T C and we did a tour of, um, Amistville, introduced her to several business owners. They all did come together and apply for a grant and they, um, won, they won that grant. So be on the lookout, their tagline is, don't miss Amistville, which I thought was pretty clever. Um, and very excited for them.
That's great.
You know, I, I hope, I hope to, that it does them well. And that's all I have.
Is Lombardi gonna reopen, is that?
That is on, um, now.
Ms. Smith?
Here's still my question about the Lombardi. I have so many fond memories of the Lombardi.
Uh, I don't really have anything. I do see, um, quite a few rumblings about spending in the county. And so I guess, I guess we'll know what if, what impacts there are, if any, on local spending, meals and lodging. Probably find out in December if we've, if we've seen any downtick in, uh, tourism. I, I kind of anecdotally think, I mean, y'all might know better than I do, Van, but it seems like traffic has been robust this year because of the park being closed, as in not taking in money. I think there are many people from the DC area that are taking advantage of basically free entry, even if it is diminished services. And I, I expect it to be a, it's kind of speculative, but I would think that we would do very well this year.
I would, yes, we've been busy. Yeah, I mean, it's provided, the park is now free. You can get in without paying, the services are diminished. But what's that?
And it didn't back up?
And it didn't back up. And we've experienced, uh, no shortage of customers.
So you get your first peak from the sales tax in December, which is kind of a proxy for all sales, including meals. And then in January twentieth is when the taxes will be due for that last quarter for meals and lodging. That's when you'll see that.
And I did, um, I did just wanna mention to my fellow board members that I did, um, check in about the, um, there was a request, I think, from a, another local elective, or another elected official that we delay the deadline or, um, do something for, uh, laid off government employees. And, and it's my understanding that we haven't received any requests locally.
No, and that's really for counties who are billing taxes twice a year, uh, to extend the deadline.
Yeah.
And I don't think that, our taxes aren't due till December.
Right, and I don't think we've received any requests even from anyone, so I, I did wanna just let people know that I had checked into that.
I mean, if this, if it's still going on in December, then it's, it's something that the board could contemplate.
Yeah.
Mr. Whitson?
Um, just to, so on the back of the First Energy thing, I just wanted to say really quickly that there, there's gonna be an opportunity, as Mr. Curry mentioned, um, for the county as a party to make regulatory comments. I think, uh, I, I'm not gonna be here, but I do think that that is the best way to get comments, to have our voice heard in that process at least by the county board. The other thing I wanted to say is, is that I don't know what angle the park is gonna take, but they're, they've, they're gonna be filing comments.
I, 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 I'm sure of that.
And if there's any intersection that this board can have with them on that, they're gonna file their own, but if there is any discussion that can happen, I don't remember the board that you're on with them.
Blue Ridge Committee. We talked about, um, some of this at the last Blue Ridge Committee, Ms. Smith wasn't able to make it. Um, but they have, um, redoubled their community relations efforts at Shimbora National Park and we have a new person assigned, whose name escapes me, I apologize. Um, and we will, um, they are keen to have more interaction with the neighbors and so this is something we can talk to them about and probably, um, coordinate efforts relative to the S E C.
'Cause I was gonna say, is this something that, again, I think it's gonna be within Q one, twenty twenty-six. Is this something you think Art might wanna tackle? I mean, regulatory comments are pretty, you know, lots, lots across.
But that is something definitely that this board should think about. I'm not gonna be here, but it is costly to get an attorney to do it and it is a process and it's very technical, but that's the way to get this heard.
When we knew that Century Link was trying to become Bright Speed, we went through the S E C process um, with surrounding or other counties that were also Century Link customers. And I think there were six of us back to back to back that read our, um, statement, 'cause it was during COVID, so it wasn't in person. Um, but I know it got a lot of attention because it just wasn't one individual county speaking. It was literally prepared. We knew what order we would be in, Albemarle led it and we just.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Um, I have two things. One, Penny, um, from, Penny Curtis from the Rappahannock, um, Food Pantry, sent me an email and said, good morning, I'm working on getting some of the kids and volunteers together to support the packing of our boxes for the holiday dinners for Thanksgiving and Christmas that we give away each year at the pantry. We will pack on Saturday, eleven twenty-two, from twelve to four. Giveaway on eleven twenty-four and eleven twenty-five from nine to four and repeat for Christmas on twelve twenty, giveaway twelve twenty-two and twelve twenty-three. I thought I would pass this along to you so that you could let your board know in case they may want to stop by for a few minutes to help out. It does not have to actually be scheduled, just a hand is always good and I'm sure the community would love to see us all. I've done it for a few years, I didn't get to do it last year and it really is, uh, well, a heartwarming experience and they need the hands to help. Uh, it, it goes really quickly. Um, but I, it's a feel-good moment, definitely, participating. Um, the other thing I have, you all know I went to the Governor's Summit on rural prosperity. I tell everybody, I wake up every day trying to figure out what we could do to make money for the county and I was all exhausted about vert, um, vertical culture. Um, the Chester Field and I think Albemarle has a vertical culture plant and basically it's indoors and the plants grow up and, um, I was excited until I found out it requires, um, natural gas. Um, I knew we could get around the water and I figured we could get around electric, but the natural gas couldn't. So I ended up speaking with Secretary Lorr and, um, just, you know, talking to him about, he knows Rappahannock, he's been here. And, um, basically he and the gentleman from, um, I think the head of the Farm Bureau, um, both said, you're a beautiful county, you're into tourism, focus on tourism. And so I, I, that just gave me a, okay, let's focus on what we've got, what we're good at and what the citizens like, um, and can support, which I think we've proven tourism does pretty good. So if we can make it better.
Citizens like tourism?
Uh, well, I think our citizens like tourism.
I think it has to be the right quantity and the right brand of tourism. I was really interested by that, um, presentation today, you know. Um, we lived for a number of years in northeast Georgia near the Foxfire Museum down there and the tradition, the story collecting and, uh, traditional ways and also the food hub creation down there, um, which is great. And I, I think that would be a great asset for Rappahannock County, but it is, it's always a question of how do you fund it? And, and large swaths of area down there are funded by tobacco guilt money, which we don't have access to.
No, we do not. So the other thing that the board may wanna know there, um, Chandler Vaughn spoke about the Rural Virginia Opportunity Dashboard. It's new, it's live and you can compare and contrast counties and all that good stuff. It is R V O D dot C F R V dot org. Uh, and it gives you information, like, does the county have water and sewer? Does, you know, is it primarily agriculture? It will give you that kind of information so you can look and see what your neighbors are doing. Um, and basically I wanna look at it now to make sure it's accurate for Rappahannock County, but I know they'd been working on it a while and it's now, it's on, it's live. I didn't hear that. Um, let's see, are we done? No.
Chippey, I think you finished your day.
Good job, Van.
I almost did it mid-meeting and got yelled at.
That was Van, did we have a second? Sorry.
Yeah, I'll second.
Donna's on it, all right.
I heard the cheer first.
Yeah, I know, I'm gonna give it, I don't think you're gonna mind. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.